Are we all here? Who are we missing? Ms. Chires?
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and begin then. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular meeting to order and announce that the board did meet in closed session and the following actions were taken. In closed session, the board unanimously took action on a resolution of intent to dismiss a certified employee and in favor of adopting dismissal charges against a certified employee. The vote again on this was unanimous. The following appointments were also made. Ms. Michelle Walner for Vice Principal for Rutter Middle School. Elizabeth Lawson-Ronner, Vice Principal, Toby Johnson. William Jones, Vice Principal, Monterey Trail High School. Toby Page, Vice Principal for Florin High School. Ms. Jennifer Avi, Director for Elementary Education, Pre-K 6 Education. Douglas Phillips, Director, Special Education and Special Education Local Planning Area. Director of English Language Learner Services, Ms. Susan Larson. I would also like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. I would like to announce that cards are available at the table just outside of the boardroom for anyone who wishes to address the board. If you do wish to address the board, please complete a card and hand it to a staff member to the right of my side. Please be sure to complete the card indicating whether the matter you wish to address is on the agenda or not on the agenda. If the matter is on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when it comes time to address that item on the agenda and will hold your card until that time. So we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance and I will go ahead and lead, kind of if I can get everyone to stand up.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I don't get any keychains. Thank you. All right, next up, we have recognition of CIF San Joaquin Section Champions. And I would like to call on Mr. Rod Edmiston and if I can get Mr. Madison to assist.
President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman. Ms. Heine is not here. Tonight, I am honored to introduce you several teams and individual champions for our 2015 Spring Sports Season. These extraordinary athletes have captured SAC Joaquin Section and Masters Championships in Division 1 and Division 2. By capturing their championships, they have proven to be the very best in the SAC Joaquin Section and the sport they compete in. My father used to tell me, "Good things happen to those who work hard." And good things have truly happened to this group of athletes and their coaches. To achieve this level of success, it takes total teamwork or pure individual mental toughness. Each of these athletes have one thing in common: dedication, determination, and perseverance. With that, it is my honor to introduce to you the Division 1 and 2 SAC Joaquin Section and Masters Championships from the Elk Grove Unified School District. First tonight, we'd like to honor the Sheldon High School Girls' Softball Team for winning the CIF SAC Joaquin Section Division 1 Championship. Team members include Maddie Ayers, Sarah Brown, Brooke Coyne, Jordan Feins, Macy Feins, Gabby Fruciano, Sarah Fukushima, Juju Milano, Talia Miles, Vanessa Porto, Shay Moreno, Jessica Scott, and Jayce Anna Vasquez. Assistant coaches, John Mendaka, Deb Salajar, Laura Zeigenhurt, and head coach Mary Jo Trusdale. This is Coach Trusdale's sixth section championship at Sheldon High School.
Wow.
Also from Sheldon High School tonight is the Athletic Director Denise Aguilar and Principal Paula Duncan.
Parents, feel free to come up and take closer photos there. Great. Did we get our shots? All right, how about another round of applause? Outstanding.
I have a few other awards for Sheldon High School for their track team, but they were unable to attend this evening, so I'm going to name the student athletes and their coaches. Okay, the girls' 100-meter dash from Sheldon High School is Amari Jones and Coach Glenn Rogers and David Stone. And the boys' four-by-100-meter relay from Sheldon High School, the student athletes are Steven Rhodes, Elias Brown, Graylin Lindsay, Marcus Bellany, and Eric Spivey. Coach Derek Downs accepting on their behalf would be the Athletic Director Denise Aguilar. And now Division 2 Section Champions from Laguna Creek High School, the boys' four-by-400-meter relay, Clinton Spellman, Matthew Ramsdale, Sam Moore, Calvin Spellman, and Coach Brian Joka. Also from Laguna Creek High School is Principal Doug Craig. Congratulations once again to our 2015 Spring Section and Masters Champions. We at Elk Grove are all proud of you. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our California-Japan Scholars Exchange Program recognitions. I'd like to call on Ms. Sanja Lowery and Ms. Nancy Chaiters Espinoza to assist.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Avalos. The Board of Education has asked to recognize all participants who actively contributed to the success of the 2014-15 California-Japan Scholars Exchange Program. The Elk Grove Unified School District recently completed its 17th year of participation in the California-Japan Scholars Exchange Program. This program was established in 1997, following a Senate delegation visit to Japan. The purpose of this program is to promote cultural understanding and international relations. On March 20, 2015, the Elk Grove Unified School District welcomed 23 Japanese students and two chaperones from Osaka, Japan for a 10-day visit. While here, they stayed with host families throughout the Elk Grove and Sacramento areas. During the week, the students attended classes at Kusumnus Oaks High School, Elk Grove High School, Franklin High School, Laguna Creek, Monterey Trail, and Pleasant Grove High School, and Sheldon High School. They toured the state capitol, where a reception was held in their honor, and visited San Francisco, where the Japanese consulate general held a luncheon and reception in their honor. The students also enjoyed sightseeing, shopping, and participating in activities with their host families. In the 2015-2016 school year, 30 selected Elk Grove School District students will have the opportunity to travel to Osaka, Japan, in the exchange over in their neck of the woods. The Board of Education asks to recognize the host families, volunteers, and committee members who were instrumental in making the 2014-15 California-Japan Scholars Exchange Program a success. We also ask that you recognize the California Senate Office of International Relations. Because of their support and grant, this program is being offered each year. I'd like to call Kevin Chen. He's a student from Laguna Creek High School, and we'd just like him to take a few moments to share about his Osaka experience.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Avalos. My name is Kelvin Chen. I'm from Laguna Creek High School. It is my honor to speak at the Elk Grove Unified School District Board Meeting. I would like to tell you how much I enjoyed the California-Japan Scholars Exchange Program. My family hosted Osaka students two times through this program, one in 2013 and one in 2015. After hosting a student from Osaka in 2013, the following year, I was able to visit Osaka and stay with my host family there for two weeks, thanks to this program. I attended Izumi High School while I was in Osaka. During my two-week stay in Osaka, I did many things with my host family and got to experience a totally different school life. Near the end of my stay, I realized that not only me, but also everyone else in the program had become very close with their host families and friends in their schools. During these two weeks, we American students and Osaka students got along very well. I was very reluctant to leave my new friends and knew I wanted to return for another three months to continue my studies in Osaka. I was determined to continue being a student in Japan and to enhance our relationship with Japanese people. With the help of my counselor and principals from both high schools, I was allowed to go back to Izumi High School in Osaka by myself. This visit helped me to see things in a wider view. This time, not only did my Japanese language greatly improve, but I also communicated more with the people of Osaka and learned more about their culture. I felt that living there for a longer period of time allowed me to appreciate the wonderful place. I believe that any student my age, Japanese or American, will only see themselves working and living out their lives in their home country. However, through this exchange program, I realized that we don't have to just stay in our home country. We could go anywhere as long as we put in the effort. The exchange program is a wake-up call for me and made me look at things differently from before. After coming back from Japan in March this year, my family hosted my host brother from Osaka. He too agrees that studying abroad is a great experience. To conclude, studying abroad not only creates international relationships with people across the world and helps our students learn more, it also helps to give the exchange students a broader view of their lives. I'm very glad that we hosted again this year, and I want to thank the school district for having this wonderful program. I want to thank all the staff, teachers, and students who supported this program. We as exchange students hope this program and other exchange programs in the world will continue to thrive in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelvin. We now like to take the moment, just a little bit of time, to honor the host students and their families. So we're going to distribute the certificates now. Ross Allen. Kelvin Chen. Hannah Fong. Kyle Hill. In addition to our students and families, our teachers at our high schools really support our program, and truly without their support, we wouldn't really be able to have this program. The teachers help put on the show when we are on the receiving end, on the inbound, but our teachers also travel when we go outbound. So tonight, we have two of our teachers here. Atsuko Kyuchi from Elk Grove High School and Lila Ross from Elk Grove High School. Lila was actually a parent volunteer. She hosted all the chaperones and took the chaperones' earnings outings while the kids were having fun. So thank you, Lila. Finally, I have two phenomenal people on my staff that really make the wheels turn on this bus, and that is Christina DeWall, Program Specialist, and Office Assistant Amanda Madrigal. And I think it's picture time.
Anyone in the audience that has a camera, feel free to come closer for your shots. Ms. Chaiters Espinoza, I believe you wanted to say a few words about the exchange program?
That'd be great. Just, I was able to attend the farewell celebration when they were saying goodbye to the last cohort of Japanese exchange students, and just wanted to again say what a phenomenal job every single volunteer and host family and host student does. Having gone through both sides of the experience, when I was in high school, I hosted at least twice, and then I also went the other direction and was a Japanese exchange student. So it's a program that's near and dear to my heart. My own son actually just returned from a student exchange, so we're very big supporters of this kind of program. So to the teachers and the staff that make it all happen, just a thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, we do not have any student expulsion recommendations. There will not be an LCAP update this evening, so next up is our budget update. Mr. Fagan.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Avalos. This evening, I'm here to present the 45-day revise. We talked a little bit about it at the last meeting as far as final changes to the state budget, and so this is a little more informal process whereby we basically send revised multi-year projections and the information of the changes to the county office. There's no formal state reporting, but we just give them an update of the changes that might have come from the final state budget when compared to the adopted budget that we had asked the board to approve. So we'll show you the adopted budget that the board approved in June. We'll talk a little bit about the changes from the adopted budget and then the new multi-year projection based on the final state budget. So here, you can see, this had all of the May revise information that we knew at the time, and you can see that we have the projected surpluses and fund balances going forward, but it's important to note that there's a significant amount of one-time dollars this year, and as we go forward, we're showing surpluses. And again, this was based on the original May revision that the governor put out very late in the school year last year, so we just added what he put out to finalize our adopted budget. And so what changed was the gap closure. You recall that the way the LCFF works is that every year, you have your target and where you're at, and we close the gap. So the gap closure was 53.08 percent in the May revision from the governor, and that dropped to 51.252 percent. So the gap that they're closing is smaller, so the amount of money, ongoing money we expect to get from the LCFF dropped by about $1.6 million. And then additionally, one-time discretionary fund, these are those dollars that the state gives us as payment for mandated cost claims, and it's unrestricted discretionary dollars, but they recommend that we use it for Common Core implementation. This is the one they're trying to get dual credit for this. So these are the two primary adjustments, and we don't get too far down into it. As we do the 45-day revision, and it's really our choice, if it's a significant change, we'll make the change. We thought this was significant to come back to the board with, so as we move forward into the new year, before we get to first interim, we have a little bit better information for staff and the board to work with. So the total change in the final state budget was $5.6 million. Four million of it was associated specifically with the 2015-16 year, and 1.6 is ongoing dollars as a reduction to LCFF funding. So when we apply those amounts to the multi-year projection that we saw on the first slide, the new revenue surplus deficit numbers appear there. You can see that this year decreased by, 2015-16 decreased by the total $5.6 million, but in each of the out-years, the change was only the $1.6 million of ongoing LCFF dollars. So these are the new numbers that we'll be working with as we move forward in the year and look at our budget to do things. We have unaudited actuals, which is the actual actuals. This is when we bring the final results of 2014-15 to the board. We'll do a comparison to the budget, talk about any variances from what we budgeted versus where we actually landed and go through that process. The next real look is first interim. That's when we have got our actual student enrollment counts. We could see changes up or down to projected ADA based on the number of kids we have on the first Wednesday in October. And that first interim is as of the last day of October. In January, we'll get the 16-17 governor's budget, his first shot at where he expects us to be for 16-17, and then our second interim is in March. I believe the first July or the final June numbers for revenue at the state came in, I want to say about $800 million up. So the $3 billion that the LAO got a good start over and above the governor's piece. So they're already getting new projections coming in over and above what the final state budget is, because theirs was based on the May receipts. So June is the first new receipts that they would compare to the governor's most recent projections. So it's just the first month, and there's a long way to go in the 2015-16 year to count dollars, but it appears that at least in the first month after the governor budget, the additional revenues are continuing over and above projected amounts. So with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments and ask the board to approve the 45-day revise.
Excellent. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Perez.
So this is... When does the 45 days start?
The day that the state approves the budget.
Right. So how many more days do we have? Why are we doing it before the 45 days? Don't we have a couple other board members on the board meetings?
No, next meeting is the 16th, and the budget was approved actually before the end of June, so this is the only meeting that falls within the 45 days.
This is the last one?
And the adjustments just to, you know, our original adopted to the final state budget, there's no changes that will happen that would be part of the 45-day revise. We don't expect anything new to be known.
So there's no... Because last time we met, I asked if that other budget was final. I think you said it was final. I think you said it was final. But now you're bringing this up to the board. It's a little bit different. And you mentioned that they had the May revised data sets or data funds that we received.
Well, I think the last time, at the second meeting in June, we talked generally about some parts of the final agreed-to budget. But the adopted budget is done based on the May revision because we don't have time to wait till the end of June to finalize our adopted budget. So, this.
So, these are actuals?
This trues this up to what the final state budget was.
That's what you're saying.
Makes our budget match the state budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all it does.
So, what does this reserve for funding priorities represent? What do you actually mean by that?
That's what it says. It would be as we move forward and develop budget priorities as a district, that's the dollars that would be available for us.
That's for, you mean, we can't, okay, actually, for 2015-16 fiscal year?
Yes. I mean, the timing on it would be up to the board as well as, you know, when you spend it and how much you spend.
Also, the other issue that I have presently, we presently do not have a policy regarding spending supplemental and concentration funds. Mr. Superintendent, can we have a workshop regarding that issue? Or what's your recommendations regarding spending supplemental concentration monies on other issues?
I'd be happy to sit down and have a conversation with you and then take that with the board president about doing a workshop. But we were unable to meet last week. So, the next time we get together, we can sit down and have that conversation.
Well, I'd like to open that up for our fellow board members to discuss this and give direction to you. And so, I'm opening it up to other board members to give recommendations or sit down and just have a talk about how we should spend concentration monies and supplemental monies in the district.
Mr. Perez, this is not on the agenda. We are only allowed to take actions on what is on the agenda. So, what you're proposing is something new. It's not on our agenda tonight.
Right.
So, you have to have your meeting with the superintendent.
It's a budget issue that I think that's very, that concerns me a lot. And I think we should sit down and talk about this policy because it affects the budget and affects the budget of particular low-income schools who have a high concentration of low-income students. And so, I don't, I disagree with your comments.
You have to do it procedurally. There's a process.
What do you suggest?
To be transparent, this is on the agenda, so we can only take action on items that are on the agenda. I suggest that you meet with the superintendent, have your discussion on what you would like to have, you know, in terms of a workshop.
Right.
And then, he will then take the next steps. But you have to have your meeting with the superintendent to share your ideas with him. This is not the, you know, you can share them at another point. But this, right now, the only item that we have before us that we are taking action on is the 45-day budget revision. You're discussing something new and above and beyond. So, again, I would suggest that you meet with the superintendent like he just suggested and have that discussion so that we can visit it at the appropriate time, but it would not be right now.
So, you don't feel that this is the time to talk about policy regarding the budget?
There, yes, Ms. Chires?
I don't want to take us further off topic, but just to be really clear, as one of the newbies here, I'm always very much a fan of any kind of education. But the role of district policy is to fill in when we need more detail, when the law doesn't provide enough detail. But in this case, the law is actually very clear about how you can spend supplemental or concentration funds. So, I don't know that we actually need it here. You can really just go back to the education code for that.
Well, exactly. I agree with you 100 percent. But yet, in the paper, Los Angeles Unified School District is getting sued because of misuse of monies because of their interpretations. So, I'm kind of very worried that we're spending money and we possibly might have to go to court as a result of not having a very good understanding how to use this money. So, maybe we need legal counsel regarding this also.
Well, I disagree with your interpretation on all of the above. I would suggest that you have your meeting with our superintendent and share your vision on anything that may be useful for the board I'm going forward. But again, tonight, what we are taking action on is our 45-day budget revise.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? All right. I would like to call for a motion to approve the 45-day budget.
I move approval of the 45-day revised budget.
We have a motion for Mr. Fortina. And a second for Mr. Madison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes or abstentions? One abstention, Mr. Perez.
If I may interject, just for clarification, and I think it's helpful for all board members.
Certainly.
But we do have a board policy on voting. And one can only evoke abstention when you have a conflict of interest. And I don't see what conflict of interest you have. So, you can vote no, but per our board policy, you can't vote abstention.
Thank you. All right. Public comment. We do have two speakers signed up. I would like to call on Ms. Karen Norberg. Hopefully, I'm not butchering your name. Good evening.
I'm the VAPA theater teacher at Arlene Heine Elementary. And I've been doing this wonderful job since Bob Rowe helped me get it when he was principal over there for eight years. Previous to that, I taught in the classroom in Elk Grove for 37 years. So, I've been with the district and really loved the district. And I have, because I've worked with grades one through six on the VAPA theater lessons, I've developed some ideas about the fine arts that I wanted to share with you. So, I'll get going because I know I only have three minutes here. So, in any case, my vision is really to have the fine arts, theater and music, visual arts and dance, become the basis through which the rest of the core subjects are taught. I know that this is, for some people, is a strange concept. But research has shown that children who have had a fine arts-based education score better on tests, are more creative, work well in groups, are happier, have a higher self-esteem. So, what I'm hoping is that we can get more of the fine arts into the curriculum. Step one would be following what I have done at Arlene Heine in taking to the other elementary schools the VAPA lessons that are already prepared. There are four per grade level, per year. And what I do is I come in four times to each of the classrooms, first through sixth grade. I only do theater because that's my background and my passion. But there would be retired teachers, parents, perhaps some college students who might like to come into the other elementary schools and present another art like music because there are some wonderful lessons. I had some training from the Sierra North Arts Project, and there are some wonderful lessons there. And I'd really like those to be shared with all of the elementary schools. Step two would be investigating a program called Artful Learning. San Juan District has funded this plan at Ottoman Elementary in Orange Vale. It was created at the Leonard Bernstein Center in New York City. And what it is, is it teaches core subjects through the fine arts, engaging all the children who love participating in the arts and want an active role, and it allows them to have that. These are concept-based lessons that are a bit like the thematic lessons that we had in the past, but this goes much deeper. And what they are doing is using all the fine arts in order to pull all this together for learning in all the core subject areas. I like this idea because I think it really grabs the children and gives them some real joy in what they are doing and also gives them a feeling of more power. So, in any case.
You've had your three minutes, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Norberg. And I do believe that we all have a handout here that you presented to the board. And I want to thank you for submitting your comments here as well. And if you have any additional questions, please feel free to follow up with any one of our staff members.
All right.
Would really appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker signed up is Ms. Susan Mason. And Ms. Mason, you know, we have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman. I've been attending the district board meetings for a couple of years now. And on occasion, I've noticed where a public hearing has been opened and closed, and there's been no comment. There's been no public comment. And I just thought that was interesting. But then, when I was looking through the Elk Grove Citizen, the classified section, just about every issue, there is public notice, notice of public hearings advertised here. And I was just wondering if I've missed something or if you have a different method of notifying community for your public hearings. I have signed up for the newsletter. I haven't gotten any information through the newsletter. And I just somehow have missed them, and I was just curious as to why, why I've missed them. I thought I could follow up with an email maybe in a couple of weeks, but it just kind of was one of those thoughts that I had.
So, Ms. Mason, you do get the agendas correct?
I can go online. I don't always, yeah. When I want to watch the archived board meetings, I can get the agendas.
Okay, because they are noticed on there.
So, that's the only place they're noticed? It's just the agendas?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe a different section of the newspaper, the community calendar, actually has all of the public agency meetings as well.
Of our different board meetings, yes.
I've seen that, but not actually.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. And I believe the next speaker, we have Mr. Tony Salamanca. It says here LCAP, but I was notified, just, you wanted to speak during public comment, correct? Hello, sir. Great. And you, sir, also have three minutes. Thank you.
Madam President, my name is Tony Salamanca. I live here in the school district, and I've been here for a number of years. There was some recent information about the LCAP and the use of the concentration and supplemental funding. I'm sure that our LCAP is consistent with what is, the instructions that have come from the State Department of Education. But I would recommend that you review the general salary increases for the 15-16 fiscal year pursuant to the instructions contained in the June 15 letter to the district superintendents written by State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom Torleksen. I believe probably because of the timing of that letter and the timing of the submission of the application that we sent, that everything was intended to be submitted properly. But we should look at the instructions from the superintendent, which states that general salary increases should not use concentration supplemental funding unless specific items were addressed. I don't believe that I saw in the LCAP application that there were any special instructions for the use of those funds if, in fact, the concentration and supplemental funds were used. Maybe they weren't. Next is if the concentration supplemental grant funds were used in salary increases for the 15-16 LCAP, that maybe it could be addressed in the budget update, understanding the instructions of Tom Torleksen. The additional documentation could be submitted to use those funds. And I would suggest probably talking with the county office of education on what those would be. But it doesn't appear that those instructions for use of those funds, if they are for salary increases, were addressed. Maybe they're not being used, but it's, unless you have a degree in school finance and have years of experience here at the district, at this district, it's very hard to go through all of those funding issues. And as a non-CPA person, I wasn't able to determine that. But it would be good to review that. And again, I'm not saying that there was any reason not to do that because it was not clear. In this letter of June 15, in my experience, those that come from the Department of Education to a district, it takes probably two, two and a half, three weeks to get down to those individuals that are doing that. And if you see the timeline that we have, then you see that it was a very tight timeline.
Excuse me, Tony. Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. And I would offer you that you follow up with either Mr. Sabudi or Mr. Hoffman, or feel free to send me an email with your specific questions and concerns. And then I will try to look into those.
Yes, okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. I do not have any other blue cards for public comment. So, I will move on to bargaining units and ask if any bargaining unit wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing none. We do not have any reports this evening. So, we will move on to public hearing action items, adjustment to school facilities fees, and call on Mr. Rod Pierce.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Avalos. It's a new part of our lingo there. I don't have a detailed presentation for you tonight, and that is because we had a detailed presentation back in April on the 21st at your board meeting, followed by an action and a public hearing by the board at the May 19 board meeting. So, this pertains to your school facility needs analysis, which is the study that generates the district-wide developer fee. We communicated at both of those meetings, as well as two previous board communications, that unfortunately, one of the large driving components of establishing the fee is what the state determined new construction K-12 grant amount is when we build new schools. By law, the state allocation board is required to update its grant each year in January. They didn't follow the law this year, and that decision was delayed until their April 15 state allocation board meeting. That did not give you enough time to include that fee, or excuse me, include that grant increase in your last school facility needs analysis because yours expired on June 5. Thus, we brought the action forward to you May 19. The only difference in the fee tonight and the study that we're presenting to you and the one that you approved on May 19 is only the state allocation board approved new construction grant amount. So, everything else verbatim would be exactly the same. This was shared with the public for 45 days, all the parties that are interested. We have a long, long list of parties that request the study. That's been shared. We had a long conversation with the North State Building Industry Association. They represent the people who pay us the fee. And as always, they understood where we were at and the reason for the increase tonight. So, should the board open and close the public hearing and adopt the study before it tonight, the fee you just approved in May at $4.91 per square foot of residential development would increase to $5.06 per square foot of residential development. So, I will say this is something that we don't take lightly. We take this study very seriously. We follow the statute and the rules of the formula. It's still not as high as it was when the economy was doing quite well. But it's also starting to grow, as you probably had read in the previous board communications and the report tonight. But we are in an odd time. And so, we need every resource that we can get. And as I've shared with you, our needs right now far outweigh the resources before us. So, I'd be happy to answer, of course, any questions that you have, but I would ask that you hold the public hearing and approve the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. I'd like to call for a public hearing on the adjustment to school facilities fees. Hearing no comments from the public, I'd like to close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve the adjustment to school facilities fees. And this is a roll call vote. So, I do need a motion.
Discussion?
Discuss.
Question.
Sure.
Could you give us some feedback of what people in the community were concerned about when they came to the open hearing? And also, what did North State Building Association, what type of input or what concerns did they have?
So, and I appreciate the question, and I did want to advise the board of one thing prior to your action. So, we didn't receive any comment from the public. The North State Building Industry Association, we have a good reputation with them. They trust our studies, and they know we stick to the letter of the law and we don't manipulate numbers. There's not a lot of leeway, and we take a conservative approach where we do have leeway. So, I think the respect is there. And because we approached them early in the process and shared the study with them well in advance of what we have to, and we engaged them in a dialogue, we're not trying to be secretive whatsoever. So, there is no. there is no feedback, other than we appreciate it. Obviously, I don't think anyone is excited about increased fees, but it, it really is just an indicator of the economy and where we're at today. So the fee's valid. They understand the nexus for mitigation. The board is also aware that the California Building Industry Association is now partnered with Coalition for Adequate School Housing, and both entities are pushing for a statewide ballot initiative. So there is already an established partnership around the fee and around the need to build public schools. Having said all that, I did receive an email yesterday from MMS Strategies, which is a consulting company out of Sacramento. They had a few questions, and we provided that information for them yesterday. I will tell the board that, that none of the interests got to how the fee is established. So the first question was, they asked for a map or a listing of the developments that are referenced in the study that have occurred over the last five years. So we provided them that. We track that information kind of on a scattergram. We, we see every home that's being built annually, and we were able to share that with them. They also asked for a map or a listing of the developments that are projected to be built in the next five years, which is referenced in the study. And so we shared that with them as well. One interesting question they had is, if you overlay the new developments and the new students that would come with those developments, where those students would fall relative to any schools that we have excess capacity at? So, the study does reference in excess capacity at the secondary level of, of 79 students, but what I was able to share with them, at the same time, the study acknowledging excess students discounts the fee based on our ability to house 79 additional students right now without spending another dollar. So they understood that. And it's a district-wide, state-determined capacity, not to be confused with our individual high school attendance areas and our district-wide capacity. And they also asked, the study references four elementary school sites that you already own, and they wanted to know which those were and where they were located. So I was able to share that information with them. So it's a longer discussion than we probably have tonight, but none of those questions actually get to how the fees are established. I think it was just kind of tracking of where development's occurring and where we might be seeing development occurring in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no other questions or comments of Mr. Pierce, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the adjustment to school facilities fees. I'll make the motion? Second by Mr. Madison, and this is a roll call vote. So Ms. Avalos, you take the role?
Beth Albioli?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. All right. We do not have any discussion items, and moving on to discussion action items, Elk Grove Unified School District Community Facilities Districts 2015, 2016, tax report, and first reading of ordinance number one, 2015, 2016. Mr. Pierce?
This is an annual item as well, similar to your school facility needs analysis. However, this is establishing the tax rolls for your very unique community facilities district number one, passed by the voters, known as Measure A. So it's the only ordinance that the school board approves each year, so it's unique in that regard. So I'll just jump right in and share the information with you. So as a little bit of a background, community facility districts are a mechanism statewide, not just for school districts, but a number of entities to finance infrastructure and amenities, in our case, obviously, schools. In order for your community facility district to be valid, it goes to your voters. In our case, because we are a district-wide Melrose, as opposed to individual Meloresses throughout our district, it was a supermajority vote, so it had to go to all voters and receive a two-thirds plus one yes, which obviously has occurred. And then the proceeds from the taxes contribute, in our case, obviously, to the construction of schools and improvements to existing schools. As I mentioned, our community facility district covers the entire 320 square miles of the district. The tax is assessed on every residence in the district boundaries, including businesses. It originated in the 87, 88 fiscal year, when voters initially approved a $7 million bond for the district, and then reaffirmed in 1998, when the voters approved an additional $200 million in bond authorization. When the tax first was assessed in the 87, 88 fiscal year, there was only, I say only, 37,128 parcels. Clearly, we've had a lot of growth since then, and that's now made up of nearly 103,000 parcels. And those aren't to be confused with dwelling units. It's, it gets a little dense when we have that conversation, but nonetheless, our CFD has experienced a tremendous amount of growth. Newer residential units and commercial parcels are assessed at a higher tax rate than older parcels. And really, what happens is it's a sliding scale based on when your home was built, and your tax on an annual basis could vary from $45 a year to $200 a year, again, depending on the year that your home was built. This is just an example of our funding model as a school district. It's how we use our resources to build and modernize our schools. About 40% of our improvements come by the way of developer fees, which you just approved. Thank you. The additional 41% would come by the way of state bonds. That's obviously a big issue for our district and many others as we move forward, whether or not the state's going to continue to contribute in state funding. But your CFD number one, or Measure A, contributes approximately 20% as a subsidy to those other funding sources. This is just a big idea or example of all the schools that the 87 bond measure helped build, followed by a number of schools that the 1998 series also helped to build and/or modernize. So clearly, by way of Measure A, we've had a tremendous amount of success and built a lot of schools and modernized a lot of schools. So each year, my staff updates our annual tax roll. It's based on information that we see from the County of Sacramento's Assessor's Office, and it comes by way of changes to zoning and land use changes because of residential and commercial projects that are approved by all three cities we serve, as well as the County of Sacramento. We say any other applicable revisions. Our tax and rate and method of taxation has some, again, some very unique features to it. If a development were to sit idle for three years, it would revert to what we call the planned rate, which is 40% of the tax. And if it sits idle for another five years, it would go back to whatever the underlying zoning was before the initial approval. So that third bullet are changes that my staff makes on an annual basis, based on that. And in the recession, sadly enough, I've never seen it in my entire career, developers actually had some of our local planning jurisdictions rescind maps that were previously approved, whether they be tentative or final. So kind of unheard of, but we would go in on an annual basis and also adjust for that. This is a summary of your 2015, 16 tax roll. It's, it's a good thing, because we had seen steep decline three years ago, when this report was given to the board. So we had a dramatic tax revenue drop three years ago, whereas in the coming tax year, you see an increase of about 2% in the overall tax revenue. Parcels are increasing, taxable units are also increasing. In fact, the only decline is with regard to future planned dwelling units. And the reason for that is that three- and five-year plan I mentioned. So we have projects that have sat idle, and they fall back to whatever the underlying zoning was previous to their project being approved. This is a summary back to 87, 88 of our overall tax roll. It's in millions, and you can see at the top there hovering at about $16 million. You can see what the recession did to the district. We really never had a decline up until the 8, 9 fiscal year, where we had a sharp decline, and it started to drop a little bit. We leveled out in 11, 12, and we've been picking up ever since. So that's a, not only a good thing in your ability to service outstanding debt, but even a better thing as we look forward to issuing additional bonds. So tonight, the board's asked to receive the tax report, which you have done, receive any input from property owners appealing the tax. This is noticed, and to date, we've received no formal appeals, and folks are invited to attend tonight if they'd like to do so, conduct a first reading of the ordinance, and continue the item to August 18th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. I'd like to call for a public hearing on the Elk Grove Unified School District Community Facilities District 2015, 2016 tax report. All right. Seeing no comments, I'd like to close the public hearing and call for a motion to move the item forward for action at the August 18, 2015 board meeting. We have a motion by Ms. Titus Espinosa. And a second from Mr. Perez. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any noes, abstentions? Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Police Services for 2015, 16 school year, Mr. Hoffman. And I do have one blue card, and I will hold that until after your presentation.
Got to use having a computer screen in front of me. Okay, so I'm going to go through the presentation here. Ms. Pinkerton, can you hit the, we'll hit the slides for me as we move forward. I did give the board a, a hard copy, because I know sometimes seen around the corner is a little bit difficult, and there should be copies available if somebody is interested in the audience. Okay, thank you. Okay, so if we can flip a couple forward? Okay, so as you know, providing police services and protecting the students and staff of the district remains a high priority for the district and the board. And just a quick summary of where we've been. December 2001 is when the Board of Trustees established our own law enforcement jurisdiction. The police mission has remained to protect the life and property, to ensure the academic tranquility for staff and students of the district. And the other relationship that we're very proud of is the 15, 15-year relationship that we've had with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, and you'll see that as part of this presentation moving forward. So the board did give direction, actually, just prior to mine coming on board, coming back to Elk Grove Unified. And so we have been working the past several months with direction from the board on this item. And the board had asked for a comprehensive review of the current practices of our police services, and we have completed that. And in doing so, we completed a number and looked at a number of pieces of information. So those are listed there. We did a program evaluation. We did a comparative research piece of police services that are provided across the state by other districts, and can thank Ms. Avalos for her assistance in doing that. Interviews and recommendations, multiple cabinet-level discussions with regards to all this information, and then we have the beginnings of the recommendation tonight. So I'll do a quick rundown of what we currently have in place with regards to police services. We do have a, a unique model. It's a, it's a blended hybrid model, in which we have actual Elk Grove Unified School District employees, as well as the contracted services that we have with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. Currently, Chief of Police is vacant. We have Assistant Chief of Police is filling some of the roles of the vacant position, three sergeants in place, dispatchers, and admin, assistant support. From the contracted work that we do with the Sheriff's Department, we have nine SROs that are at our comprehensive high schools. We have another SRO who serves our alternative schools and also provides service for our school, school attendance and review board policy. And then we also use off-duty deputies and weekend coverage by our sergeants. And we also have the services of a lieutenant that works directly with us, providing services. So this graph is a little bit tough to see, but you can see it on the smaller monitor. What I can tell you is the, the items in white during the Monday through Friday, those are our general resources that we have in play to support the security and safety of our schools, including the chief, assistant chief, the SSD lieutenant, our sergeants, the SROs, and off-duty sheriff's support. What you see in the next four lines, you see two blue lines and two green lines. Those are our off-duty hour schedules and how we cover, currently cover the district for 24/7 protection. So the blue lines that you see there are actually on-call support by our current sergeants, who are available when needed, and the green SSD off-duty, those are actually deputies that are off-duty from the Sheriff's Department, or one of our SROs that are physically touring and supporting the district, and actually going to calls and that kind of thing during the off-night hours. So some of the work that we did to make sure we understood what was going on from our stakeholders, a couple of things were really important for us was widespread and consistent practices. We wanted to make sure, as a district of 320 square miles, of 60,000 plus kids, 60-plus sites, it was important that we had a comprehensive police services model that met the needs of all of our schools. Consistent implementation across the district has come across as a very important need and desire of our stakeholders. The idea being, working with one outside entity, currently, the Sheriff's Department provides us with consistent implementation and interpretation of, of law across our entire jurisdiction, which we believe pays dividends to our students and staff. And then also, another important issue is making sure we have consistent and up-to-date training of staff. Things are always changing. As you know, if you pay any, as we all pay attention to the news on a regular basis, police services is ever-changing, and the requirements and the interactions with communities and making sure we're up to date there is very important. The other things that came through is really important was the idea of 24-hour service across the board. And the one thing we have with our relationship with the Sheriff's Department is access to resources well beyond what we'd be able to do as a relatively small police department. The radio that they have on their hips, and the ability to contact other resources as a site principal for seven years, I value that service greatly, and our other stakeholders do as well. The other piece that came through from the board specifically was of great importance to, to me personally, came through with our sites and as well as the cabinet conversations, was clearing transparent communications throughout the chain of command. We have to know what's going on. We can't, we can't have secrets within, within this kind of work. It's too important, and, and, and the issues that we're dealing with need to be addressed. The other balancing fact in this whole thing, and I want to make sure we're clear about, and you'll see this in some of the, the slides moving forward, we want to pay particular attention to the fiscal responsibility that we hold in providing the best services possible within what we deem to be a reasonable fiscal commitment. And that, that balance is, is very important. All right. So moving on to the recommendation, which I know some folks around the district and, and the board has been waiting for, I do want to make a note that the overall work that we're going to do within police services and providing security and safety at our sites is, is going to be comprehensive in nature, and is going to take, is going to be, there's going to be other presentations that deal with other issues. Tonight, I want to make sure we're very clear about the issues that we're going to deal with, and I'm asking the board to take action on, are really tied in very three specific areas. One is the idea of establishing a Director of Safety and Security. It's a new position, and I will talk to that in future slides. I'm also proposing the addition of two sergeant-level positions in the Elk Grove Unified School District Police Services Department. And you will see, that recommendation will deal directly with the on-call duty of that service that we're currently providing. We believe we can save the district money while providing actual bodies in the streets, on our campuses, in the off-hours, providing service. And then the other one is a, an adjustment to the MOU that we have with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. The current MOU goes to the end of this year, so there's no reason to redo the entire MOU, but there is a particular part of the, part of the MOU that we want to adjust that we think is of great benefit to our school sites, and is also of benefit to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. So the first one I'll take on is the adjustment to the MOU. I am proposing a 12-month police service model that will provide us with more consistent service, as well service, um, as well as additional time, uh, for specialized training of our school resource officers. In our current model, we have a twelve-month program, and on the twelve, and, excuse me, a ten-month program, and in the ten-month program, uh, they service our schools while our schools are in session, uh, and then, uh, they are back into patrol, um, during the summer months. As we brought summer school back, we've actually had to amend the, uh, the MOU and add expenses to pay for, um, services during, um, June as we've run summer school. So we've already gone beyond the ten-month model, um, but then after that is over, um, the SROs again go back into patrol, um, and are not available, um, to us. Uh, so what I am proposing here is, uh, instead of the ten-month model with the additional summer school car, uh, coverage which you see down the left-hand side, I'm proposing a, an amendment to the MOU, uh, for twelve-month coverage, and we would cover ten and a half months of that coverage, and the Sheriff's Department has agreed to pay for the one-and-a-half month salaries of the employees as well as provide the summer training, um, that we, uh, that we discussed. We think those trainings, um, cyberbullying, um, active shooter, there's a number of things that are related to school safety, um, that, uh, we believe these, uh, the trainings during the summer would be of great value. It will not be an additional cost for the district as we are already funding ten months and having to pay for, uh, part of June anyway. Uh, what we are getting is the deputies staying with us, um, all twelve months, additional training that they weren't receiving before, um, and they are also, um, looking to offer summer programs for kids, um, during the, um, during the summer months as well. So we believe it's a win-win. The deputies don't go back into, um, the regular patrol. They receive additional trainings, uh, which will help them serve us better, um, the remainder of the year. The other piece I'm, um, looking for is the addition of the, um, two, uh, sergeants within the Elk Grove Unified School District Police Department. Uh, a, um, concern that was brought forward by the Board of Education, uh, was the overtime piece that we were, um, doing in our, in our old model, and the old model, uh, was paying for the, uh, sergeants, and we only had three of them, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. There's no way they can be during the day, um, and cover the off-hours, so they were, um, available on radio, paid for their time, responded, um, when necessary, uh, but they weren't actually, um, in the streets, in a car, responding to calls, uh, across the district. Uh, the recommendation is to have the two sergeant-level positions, uh, within the Elk Grove Unified School District Department, and you'll see on the next slide how that will change our service-delivery model. This one. One more, there we go. So this is our, the, this is the same slide that I showed earlier. Um, the white items are the current, um, uh, resources we have, Monday through Friday during our regular days, and then you see the blue, um, in the off-hours are our sergeants that are on-call, just their saying, three sergeants trying to cover twenty-four-seven, and then the off-duty officers that you see in green. On the next slide, what you'll see in the middle row is the addition of a Sergeant Four and a Sergeant Five. Those sergeants will cover, uh, the seven PM to seven AM time period, um, seven days a week. They'll rotate three days one week, um, four days the next, uh, but the two positions can cover all, uh, that time between seven PM and seven AM, and they are actually physical body in cars, um, responding to calls in our district. Um, and you'll also see we reduced the off-duty, um, of the Sheriff's Department from, uh, from two to one. Uh, in working with police services, we believe that ten PM to four AM is the, um, the high time for break-ins at the schools and other type calls, so that's the, the timeframe that we think is the best for, uh, for doing that coverage. Uh, I do think we could have, um, just added additional off-duty, um, sheriffs during this time period instead of having the, uh, fourth and fifth sergeant. Uh, my belief is having one of our Elk Grove Unified School District employees in this position, um, who, uh, is, who's not trading out every other day like the off-duty, um, uh, deputies do, it will give us, uh, clearer communication, cleaner communication between, uh, what's going on in the field and when they need to contact Mr. Pierce's department because we had a break-in at a school, um, in the middle of the night. Um, I'd much rather have that communication going directly through a regular employee of the district, um, versus someone that's rotating through on a regular basis. Uh, we also could've gone the other direction and just had the Elk Grove sergeants in place and not had an off-duty, uh, deputy in place, um, and that would've been less expensive. Uh, we believe that this is a, um, a medium, um, version regard, uh, with regards to funding, but provides maximum, um, coverage, um, and increases, um, the accountability and the communication chain, uh, throughout the process. So then the other, um, concept... Did we skip, did we skip one? Okay, all right. Um, so there is a cost analysis that we'll do in the end, um, but in the end, the cost analysis saves us about eighty thousand dollars using that model versus the current model. That's including putting the two sergeants in place. Uh, the other thing I wanted, the, uh, the third thing that I wanted the board to consider, um, was to add a, um, a position, um, of regard to a, um, Safety and Security Director, and the idea being there, um, I wanted an administrative position, um, with admin experience, responsible for the management of safety plans, serving as a communication link between outside agencies and our, um, agencies, um, someone that's scheduling, um, all of the training, um, of officers, um, taking care of the annual, um, reports that we do, and also moving forward, we're gonna do more extensive, um, annual reports, um, of what's going on with the police department, and I prefer that to be done by an administrator versus the current model is the officers are doing a lot of that work, which takes them out of, um, the actual service to schools, uh, while they're doing that work. So I believe the, uh, the director, uh, position will allow us to move forward, um, in a cleaner direction. Also, I think it, um, it clarifies communication links between the police department and my office and ultimately with you. So, cost analysis, as you move through, um, each of these pieces, um, you'll see that there is an, an overall savings, um, by doing a reduction in the overtime. Um, this first one talks about the overtime expenditures that we're doing with the, um, with the current sergeants, and that overall, um, savings on an annual basis will be about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. With the reduction of the, uh, one of the swing shifts with the, um, Sheriff's Department, we also see a reduction there, um, which comes to about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, almost a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars on an annual basis. As we add back, um, the, uh, the sergeants, um, you'll see that cost comes to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, just short of two hundred thousand dollars for those two positions, that salary and benefits, um, the overall savings with this process in place is about eighty-seven thousand dollars. I think we have better coverage, clearer lines of communication, and we do it at a savings. The director will be, uh, the question is regarding, uh, the director. The director position once is in place, um, there will be adjustments to the, um, to the overall leadership model within the, um, within the police department that will make that a break-even, um, proposition, so it won't be a, an additional cost. Um, I didn't bring forward, um, the, the next set of recommendations, um, until after, uh, the board has given me direction on these three, uh, but as I bring things forward, you'll see that there'll be no, um, cost to the district, um, for the director because there'll be an elimination of another position moving forward, uh, that will, uh, level that out. So I'll open up to, um, questions, um, to the board.
All right, um, before the board deliberates and ha- asks questions and comments, I will go ahead and call upon Ms. Nancy Clifford. And since this is outside of our normal bargaining unit time, so we do have the three-minute observation.
I promise to be good.
Thank you.
I, I have this many notes.
Perfect.
President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, Ms. Avalos. Just for the record, I'm Nancy Clifford. I'm a Senior Business Agent with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, um, and we represent the AFSMI Group here at the school district. This is impressive. I want to say thank you to all of you for all of the effort and insight that you have brought to this problem. When I got here back in November of two thousand and three, um, police services was functioning, but there were hu- there were big holes in the process, and there never was a lot of transparency, and there wasn't a lot of consistent application of services, and that's what we always saw was missing. Um, and then add that to the budget issues where we lost most of our, uh, security staff and we were barely able to get them back a couple of years ago. This is marvelous. This is what the district has needed for a very, very long time. AFSMI supports this wholeheartedly. Um, we think we see a place for us in the system, um, and we know that that will come in time, but for now, it, it's almost everything we could've asked for. Uh, you put together a marvelous plan, you're saving money, you're creating opportunities for better, uh, employment. Um, a, a director instead of a chief, I think, is a marvelous idea, freeing officers up to do their jobs rather than be stuck doing administrative tasks. Big, huge savings. And as I say, we look forward to, to what our role will be in the process as well. So I'll close by thanking you, uh, for your wisdom and your insight and the tremendous effort that you put forth in this plan. This is a good thing, um, and your willingness to act so soon in the new fiscal year is, is a better thing. Um, we're proud to support it, and it almost makes me want to stick around another year to see how it comes out.
(laughing)
Almost. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clifford. Um, typically, I open it up to the board to start discussions, but on, on this one, um, I am so passionate about this, I will go ahead and start the discussion since I was one of several board members who brought this forward, um, to have this sort of comprehensive review of police services. Um, first and foremost, I do want to recognize and thank the Sheriff's Department for the longstanding, uh, partnership and collaborative, uh, relationship that we've enjoyed. It has definitely, uh, been a great partnership, and we've definitely, um, advanced school safety, and so I do want to recognize all of the hard work there. Um, and then also want to thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I know that, uh, we started this over a year ago, the old board. Um, we started this process and, and asked for a review of services, and you've brought forward, I think, a, a wonderful proposal. So I do want to recognize, um, all of your hard work and everybody else, um, that played a role in this as well. Uh, it is very comprehensive of our current police service model, and I think that you brought forward a very thoughtful approach, which included stakeholder input, uh, evaluations, review of other district models, as well as recognizing, um, that our school district includes many other jurisdictions. And so our model that we have with the county, with the Sheriff's Department, is one that works very well for us because we are multi-agency. The City of Elk Grove, City of Sacramento, Ranch of Cordova, as well as the county. So it is, it is, uh, it is a hybrid because, um, we are very unique. We have many cities that border us, but you really took a look at what the needs were and looked at the, the results and looked at what a lot of the comments were, and came up with something that I think, again, uh, makes sense, uh, in a call for a twenty-four-hour of services, up to, up-to-date training, uh, for staff, uh, very transparent process, uh, that allows for increased communications, um, with everyone, with all parties, a proper chain of command where all parties understand the role of each, for, of each, of each staff member. I think that's very important and that, that is something that was, um, not as, not as apparent, uh, in previous years, and I think that was a result you, you, you saw, um, in feedback as well. So I think, um, you know, you've captured a lot of those with creating this, with this new position and reallocating, um, some of these, uh, with the job description and then coming up with, uh, with new positions as well. Uh, and again, you're doing that in a way that's also being fiscally responsible, so I appreciate you bringing back something that does not cost us money, but we are increasing student safety. So I think that, again, overall, the proposal advances safety and security for our students, our staff, and our property, and, you know, living in a, in a time where we do see school shootings unfortunately happen, um, this really does go a long way to promote, uh, school safety, and it allows up-to-date information and best practices and all of the training that we will now have the opportunity to utilize to ensure that we are current, uh, and that partnership with the Sheriff's Department continues. But again, I want to thank you as one of the first board members that, that requested this, that you brought forward something and you really listened to what, um, what everybody had to say. So I wanted to thank you and recognize that. So I will turn it over to my other colleagues, Ms. Titus, uh, Mr. Fortina. He's been itching here, so.
Thank you. Uh, it'd be an understatement, uh, to say that, uh, this has been an area of concern. Uh, it's, it's been beyond that. The report itself, uh, is good in showing the clarity of thought. It, it was a multi-pronged approach to looking at the issues that were of concern to board members and others. The, uh, the key areas that were stated hit upon all of the concerns that had been addressed in the past, uh, and particularly the last one, clear communication and transparency. You cannot have an effective department, office, government without clear communication and transparency, and the proposed model, uh, appears that it will do that, especially with the addition of the director position and holding that person accountable to do their job. Uh, and, and it's, 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 it's wonderful. You know, we've had a lot of stellar nights here recently. Our LCAP, to me, was a stellar night, and our approval of budget was a stellar night, and we have two tonight, uh, two issues that have been, uh, needing to be addressed for a long, long time, and, uh, and both of them have received the clarity of, of, of thought and process that they deserved. Um, I've had a, a chance certainly to thoroughly review the evaluation report, and you have already stated that there is more coming, and I know there's more coming. The one piece that I'll be interested in seeing, and certainly is the last phase of the evaluation, uh, but, you know, dealing with the, the, uh, the culture and climate of the department was something that a lot of us felt very strongly needed to be done. And, and as I looked at the evaluation report and, and I, and as I look at the key areas of stakeholders, so it comes through. It comes through. Uh, communication has to be clear and consistent all the time, not some of the time, and it has to be clear and consistent with all of the stakeholders and all the people who are gonna be i- impacted. So, uh, I say thank you. Uh, I've had a discussion with you, uh, before, and most people know, uh, that for me, if, uh, something could've been done yesterday, I have a hard time trying to accept why it will be done tomorrow. And this has been thirteen months, uh, but we're here and we're moving forward, and it was, it was moved in a thoughtful way, and, and I'm really appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortina. Ms. Titus Espinosa?
Well, I will try not to be too repetitive of what's been said, except to say I agree with everything that's been said. Um, this wasn't the first time I, I heard the details about this plan, but hearing the superintendent describe it, um, it was even more impressive this time. Um, my reaction honestly was, wow, um, to see so many improvements in so many areas, a clear, um, a clear improvement in service for our students, for our staff, and at a cost savings is, uh, something we hope to see more of, actually, so (laughing). It, it is really wonderful, um, and particularly given the complexity of this task. Um, I'm not sure if, you know, those of us here in Elk Grove realize, for starters, how rare it is for a school district to have its own police force. I believe there are only about twenty school districts in California that operate a police force themselves, uh, let alone one like ours, which is so, uh, you know, geographically expansive and, and contains so many jurisdictions. Um, I, I particularly appreciate the involvement of stakeholders. I think it, it led to a better outcome, the development of a better plan. I like the phasing in and, um, you know, the, the thoughtfulness that went into this plan, um, and, um, I'm, I'm very excited to see us move forward with this, and, um, to Ms. Clifford's comment, if, if you think this is impressive, you know, the vision is pretty amazing. So once we get it fully implemented and, and really make best use of all of our people here who are our best resource, um, it's, it's gonna be even better.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Alary.
I would just like to add additional comment. Um, again, this wasn't the first time that it's rolled out, but I want to thank you- Again, this wasn't the first time that it's rolled out, but I want to thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for meeting with me earlier in the week, last week, to discuss this and thoroughly going over some of the questions. I feel that being a new board member here, I had a lot of questions and so I was able to ask those individually and got very thorough responses. And so again, I echo what my colleagues say in regards to the fact, the very thorough proposal and also including other proposals in that, along with the evaluation. Again, having you break down each component and as well the cost savings to the district was really instrumental in moving forward with the plan. So again, I'd just like to echo what has been said previously and that I appreciate and value the support you've given and the direction in this region here when we're talking about school site safety because it, again, it's really instrumental for all our students and all our staff and employees.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments or questions? Mr. Madison.
Yeah, just real quickly, me and one of the veteran board members up here when we established the Police Department, I should say the Sheriff's Department's integration into our system. And make no mistake, since 2001, the Sheriff's Department has done an outstanding job with this district. We were on a growth span that was spiraling out of control and from safety standpoint, there was a lot of issues going on. So we've had an outstanding relationship with the district, with the hybrid model now, the blend. I'm sure it's going to get better. I want to thank our superintendent that we didn't jump real rapidly when you came on with us. I asked for you to take the time to evaluate and let's really look at what needs to be done for our district and he did that. I'm not, as one board member, I don't need it to be done yesterday. I want it to be done right for children by doing the right thing and taking our time and doing it care, very carefully. So I have no doubt that we'll move forward and we'll even make a better police force for our district because it's going to continue to grow and, and we need good police services out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Did somebody, Mr. Perez.
Excellent job. Part one of your proposal was very impressive. The evaluation was very impressive and I echo my fellow board members on their responses to this request. Part two, I'm concerned about emergency response plan, if it's going to be included. I'm concerned, or I'd like to see possibly the unit working with our possible cadet academic academy. Also lately, within the last two months, I have seen a lot of gang graffiti around Florin High School and, and Valley High School and other areas throughout the district. So I'd like to possibly see some type of project dealing with that particular issue. And also like them to continue working on bullying within the schools and take on those Other than that, health and safety has always been my number one concern within the district and it's going that way. I congratulate you again for a good, well, well-done job.
Ms. Albianni.
Well, anything I say would be repetitive, I think. Excellent job. It's very exciting. I'm new to the board. This is how things should get done and they're getting done great. So I think it looks great. I'm excited to see what else comes out of it and it makes fiscal sense, which makes me happy.
Excellent. So now we will call for a motion to approve the proposed direction for police services for the 2015-16 school year. Those three items have already been, I can, I'll state them for the record. The proposed leadership model for the district's safety and security division, including establishment of a Director of Safety and Security. The second one, proposed addition of two sergeant-level positions for the Elk Grove Unified Police Services Department. And the third one, proposed amendment to the MOU with Sacramento County Sheriff's Department calling for cost sharing of 12-month service model, where EGUSD funds 10 and 1/2, 10.5 months, and the Sacramento Sheriff's Department funds 1 and 1/2 months.
I gladly move approval.
Can I second it?
We have a motion for Mr. Fortina, a second for Mr. Perez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any noes or abstentions?
So just a quick comment. First, I just want to say thank you to the board for giving me the time to work through the process and also providing feedback along the way. My cabinet has been instrumental in having the conversations and looking at the information and putting this recommendation together. I will also say work with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department has worked well. And Assistant Chief Ewing, who's working in the position right now, has also been instrumental in having someone to bounce ideas off of and provided a great deal of input in this process. So thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have Student Attendance Review Board, SARB, pilot program. And I'd like to call on Mr. Mark Sarudi.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman and Ms. Avalos. Nice to see you.
I appreciate the opportunity to provide information for the board as well as request action to fund a recommendation for a similar process that was used in terms of continuous improvement. And, and there is a connection because as, as we were looking at the examination of, of police services within the, just the context of continuous improvement, our SARB process was something that we wanted to take a look at. And so I'm pleased to have Mr. Steinhauer, Carl is here in attendance, and this is despite the fact, he's actually on vacation this week. So this is either an indication of his incredible commitment, dedication to the district, or it's an indication of his complete inability to plan a vacation. It's, it's one of, it's one of those two and I think it's the, the former. And also, Mr. Don Gordon and Ms. Carrie Hargis, those three folks were integral to the planning of, of the process that, that we used. And so the work, as we always do, is centered around our, our learning vision of every student learning in every classroom and every subject every day. Obviously, attendance is key to learning. The data piece is crucial in terms of data that we look at, data that we analyze, the wellness component of the reasons students come to school and attend school and are successful in school, and then of course, the engagement with our parents. There's support systems that ring that and I will come and focus for a moment on continuous improvement in just a minute because there was a very explicit process that was used. We refer to it as a decision-making model that was used. And so a couple of things just regarding attendance, we wanted to, and of course, the boards received the full report from the work that was done. But I won't go through and read every single one of these, but every quote that's indicated here is specific to the, the fundamental importance of attendance. And it can be one of those things that, as educators, the old, if they're not in school, how can they learn? And so it's, it seems very, very obvious. But the last one up there, I think, is, is fairly pertinent and telling. Absenteeism has been overlooked by educators and policymakers and it's an irony, given how much effort goes into improving schooling on the assumption students are actually attending school regularly. That's not to say that in Elk Grove, we haven't paid any attention to it and we haven't done anything. We've had attendance campaigns and a variety of things. But in terms of taking a, a very, very detailed analysis, not just of programmatically, but begin to look at what we can do to address it, it, it's needed in what we will be presenting to you, I think indicates the degree to which the seriousness that we're taking it and what we think we can do to directly impact attendance rates and get our kids in school. Just a moment before I, I touch on some of the, the pieces that the data indicated, we, we utilized when, when Carl and I sat down for the first time, and I really want to indicate that, again, that those folks did a terrific job in mapping this out. But the question was, so how do we, how do we proceed? And we did utilize the decision-making model. And so there was a thorough examination of data and looking at a gap and cause analysis when that's crucial before you just jump in. As you folks were talking about the thoughtfulness behind the decision with the Police Department, the data approach and things of that nature used a very similar strategy. So this doesn't happen just by accident. It happens by a very systematic and a very detailed, and, and it's an approach that is explicit in terms of the steps taken, the questions asked, the order that those questions are asked in. And one of those key questions, of course, is the examination of stakeholders. Who needs to be involved and when? And the work that was done pulling the team together, a broad base of folks to begin this process, up to and including board representation on there, which was hugely, hugely appreciated and much needed. So I just want to point that out in terms of, you know, when we, we show that graphic of E4, it's a nice picture, but there's a lot of meaning and it's only as good as the meaning behind it. And we do adhere strictly to the, the practices that we have to make sound decisions. So some of the data, key data points, is that the findings weren't simply to look at data, it was looking at examining processes. It was asking questions of folks who have their hands on attendance practices and the need to improve consistency of site attendance accounting. There is a need for professional development at both the site administrative and, and staff levels. In my role, in my previous role as Director of Secondary Education, one of the things that I worked with was oftentimes our, our data processors and registrars. And those folks do incredible work and our attendance folks do incredible jobs at the school site and oftentimes develop really key strategies, but you can also have different strategies being used across the board. And when you have 65 schools, things can be done in different ways. So one of the things we want to look at is making sure we understand what best practices are, training folks in those best practices and then adhering to them. Looking at current SARB practice needs overall redirection and that was confirmed through surveys. Disproportionality exists by student subgroup in terms of kids who are chronically absent. We need to look at early intervention strategies for our chronic absentee kids at the K3 level. Attired attendance interventions and then really weaving that into our PBIS program is crucial. Chronic absenteeism, missing 10 or more, 10 or, 10 or more percent of a school year, two days a month is a major factor in not reaching grade level performance. It seems obvious, but the data is very explicit and clear. And then what can be startling data, but it's actually the reality. And until you look at the reality, I really look at this in some ways, not saying there's a direct correlation, but when Mr. Pierce brought energy efficiency to the district, one of the things that he did was bring it to the attention of everyone. And just by bringing the attention to it, all of a sudden, we didn't necessarily buy new equipment or hire new staff. We paid attention to it and it's resulted in millions of dollars coming back. And so we do need to take a hard look at and recognize what those numbers are. And so over the course of a, of a given year, there's about $12.5 million of ADA that we don't, that we don't get because of absence, absences at our schools. So in terms of the recommendation, there is, and again, the board received the full report and a board communication associated with it. It's to establish a district attendance improvement office. That office would be part of the Department of Student Support and Health Services, would be over with Mr. Stein, in Mr. Steinhauer's department, part of Education Services. To integrate, as I indicated, a three-tiered approach to attendance into the district initiative of, of our PBIS. It's not an add-on, it's an integrated component of it. It's to integrate attendance improvement into all of our district initiatives. And it's really crucial. Donna, Tina and I are meeting tomorrow to look at how we're integrating all the, the initiatives for this upcoming school year. And that's the only way that this will be successful is if we're being aware of how we can approach, how we can address and how we can improve attendance, not just as a separate entity, but that it's integrated to all of the work that we do. The attendance improvement office would collaborate with other district divisions to structurally address attendance issues. And this is crucial because it is working across multiple divisions to make sure that the work and the planning is cohesive and coherent and successful. And as it indicates, looking at the introduction of student attendance review teams or SART teams and looking at everything from, that's noted there, including up, including it up to withdrawal procedures. Fully-staffed attendance improvement office with Student Support and Health Services Coordinator, which is a part-time position. A recommendation is for two regional improvement attendance specialists, one, one part-time school nurse and one full-time program assistant. Develop and initiate attendance ADA incentives to the schools, actually in alignment with and similar to what Mr. Pierce has done with our energy incentives. Introduce use of outside resources, and this is crucial, we're not just looking internally, but we're looking externally. Partners against chronic truancy or PACT. And then our collaboration with District Determinies Office, Juvenile Court, Probation, Human Assistance, Child Protective Services and SAC County Truancy Court. And of course, we wouldn't be doing any of this without an evaluation strategy and that's part of our continuous improvement processes. Prior to implementing any program, we know clearly what the key performance indicators are, how we're going to be evaluating and reporting out that progress. The budget recommendation, the, there was a, the team put together a recommendation for a broader district-wide program. And after discussion in cabinet and looking at our capacity to implement and evaluate, it was deemed most appropriate to cut that back and pilot it so that we can be certain that our efforts are targeted, focused and productive, and then we can look at scaling those up. So our recommendation is for $408,500 and it should be noted that $78,000 is actually already within the budget. In 2013, it notes that the SARB office, that level of SARB office staffing and with the proposed increase, we're hoping, as you can see, the, the SARB office had an estimated increase of ADA of about $740,000. And so we would hope that what we would do is actually pay for and probably pay for and have additional monies come in as a result of these, these efforts to increase ADA. And with that, I would ask if the board has any, any questions because ultimately what we are looking for is a respectful recommendation by the board to approve that expenditure and the development of our attendance office. And I would ask Carl and Don and Carrie to be on deck. If there's a question that I can't respond to, they'll come up and have the answer for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sarudi, for that outstanding presentation. And I want to thank my colleague up here, Mr. Fortina, for serving on this task force, if you will, and ask, ask you to lead the discussion.
Thank you. Certainly, being on the committee was a pleasure. Carl and Don did an admirable job. You know, when I ran for a seat on the Board of Education, I had an agenda. And one of the items on that agenda, pretty much near the top, was SARB. SARB and not, not shooting arrows, just stating what we all know. SARB in Elk Grove Unified School District was a minimal program that received minimal attention. And yet, we all know the impact on students' learning when they're not in school. And there's a lot of purposes to SARB, but certainly the positive intervention piece of SARB is, is what needs to be, be the focus all the time. And helping parents and students mitigate the barriers to prevent kids from coming to school is work that we need to do and we need to focus on. Working on the committee, and I, and I gave short reports to the board, when the committee was making its final recommendations, as Mr. Sarudi said, it was pretty comprehensive. And, and what we looked at, and it's just, and it's, and it's process, what we looked at is if we as a committee believed in the recommendations that we were making, then, then there was only one recommendation to make and that was to implement the program as, as it was, it was determined. But inherent in that also was the knowledge that the recommendations would be reviewed by the superintendent and cabinet and that a, a revision to the recommendation would probably be made. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's how you do things. And that's okay because the bottom line is SARB got the attention it deserved. That's, that's the bottom line. That's the key point. As we are moving forward tonight with police services, we are As we are moving forward tonight with police services, we are going to be moving forward with SARB in terms of looking at all of the ways in which we can provide the positive interventions to parents and children. And at the same time, providing the training to staff that has been so lacking and with the coordinator position, the director position, having someone who can oversee the implementation of the program throughout all the schools. So it's being done the same way. It's that consistency piece again. And that's one thing I know, talking with Donna and Tina and Rob and certainly Mark and others, in a district our size, consistency is going to be the issue that's going to be in your face every day of the week. And that's just because of size. So it's wonderful to have a program that is spelled out, it is well-defined. It was with Carl and Don and Mark, it was inclusive in terms of the representation from Sheriff's Department, from probation, from schools, just right across the board so that the recommendations are the best thought of a lot of people along with the research that has been done in the area. So it's, I couldn't be any happier than I am tonight with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortina. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Chayetis Espinoza.
Well, first, I want to thank our colleague, Mr. Fortina, for his, quote, "agenda," for his leadership on this issue and everyone else who worked on putting this together. I just was struck by one comment that you made, Mr. Sarudi, which is that attendance kind of seems like a no-brainer. I think that's the way a lot of people think about it. But when you look at the diversity of the partners that are involved in this, it really brings home how complex an issue this is. And in many ways, attendance is sort of the, I guess, the canary in the coal mine. It's a very comprehensive type of triage, really, that's called for. A lot of referral to different types of services and it's very exciting. It goes hand in hand with the police services that we just saw and supports everything else we're trying to do here. Obviously, you know, our kids can't be exposed to our wonderful services if they don't put in the seat time, but I'm very excited to see this move forward.
Ms. Martinez Alari.
I, again, would just like to echo the above comments and the fact that, reading this as a new board member, I have to say I was very excited about the report, not only this report, but also the report of the police services. I had my highlighter out, going through each of these components and the information presented for me was interesting, finding out the professional development, but also the verification of absences. Sometimes the parents aren't even aware if their student had attended a class because as far as they know, maybe they sent the student off to school and there's other things going on where the student maybe had made it there. And I think all of that is, you know, instrumental when we're moving forward. And so, again, I have to echo and, again, say that I'm really grateful and I really see the value in this type of report that was submitted and also the data component to it, the survey that was done and the feedback. Again, going through that, I was really excited to see that component added here as well. So, again, I am looking forward to the future and I agree with police services, how that's going to be a shared component with SARB along and working together alongside of one another.
Mr. Perez.
This has always been one of my concerns also, just very similar to Mr. Fortina's. And I worked, and as you know, I worked in this type of project before at Kennedy High School, dropout prevention project. Bottom line is that if you don't have students in school, they drop out. They're out there in the community doing, no, no, good deeds, whatever. So I went to talk to the sergeants who were running this program. I went to go talk to the support staff that were in the district office off in Gerbert. I talked to students and principals regarding this program and how successful it was and how much money it generated for the district. It didn't take too much, it's common sense that this is a program that works, but yet you need people to knock on the doors. Here, I see a lot of district office, maybe I need to ask some questions before I even say that. The regional improvement attendance specialists, do they stay in the office? Do they go on knocking on people's doors? And are those police officers with a badge that they had in the prior project?
Sure, Carl will be able to explain specifically how that is and what those staff will be doing.
Yeah, the regional attendance improvement technicians will be working closely with the Sheriff's Department. They will be knocking on doors. They'll be out in the community. They'll be trying to work with families to understand the barriers to attendance and provide resources to families. So the answer is that they will be knocking on doors.
Okay, very good. But yet, for the safety of those individuals, they'd be going to some rough neighborhoods and not, sometimes just the presence of the badge and knowing that they might have to deal with the probation department, they might have to deal with children's protective custody. And like I said, I spoke to the other officers that were in this job. It improves, what do you call, rapport relations with the Sheriff's Department when they do this because they're not the bad guy, they're the kind of guy that's going to be knocking on the door, trying to help them, dealing with a variety of issues. It could be family support issues, health issues, gang issues. So we need somebody. And I spoke to the individuals that went with the sheriff officers, they liked that. They liked to partner with those, the non-uniform specialists that went out there before. They liked that. They felt comfortable, they worked as a team, you know, with the officers, sheriff officers, when they knocked on the doors. They had more presence in the community and, like I said, they resolved a lot of problems with these youth at a, you know, non-threatening matter. And they developed rapport with the community and prevented a lot of problems that we have with our students in the communities. So I would like to suggest that we continue having sheriffs or police officers be part of this program because it pays for itself. Like I said, I came forward before and that was one of my concerns. And I wanted this in the LCF funding, Outcap Plan, but I got shot down. I didn't have no four votes, so I'm glad it's on the table again. I support this 100%. But yet, like I said, there's issues that I'd like to see if, did you guys also get some feedback from the prior officers and their recommendations? Because they had some recommendations that, what I'm speaking to you about right now, they would like to have a little bit more funding, staff and to deal with these, follow through with these particular students that they were dealing with. They have a lot of problems and they need counselors, you know, they need maybe a nurse. I like the fact that you have a nurse because they can do referrals to a variety of mental health, for instance. There's issues like that. And so, and it's time-consuming, you know, follow-up, there's a lot of follow-up on this. So I think, you know, the fact that, you know, you have a good plan, but it needs a little bit more tweaking to it, what I'm saying. And I'd like to see maybe more staff full-time and the presence of a police officer because of health and safety issue with those work, with those regional improvement attendance specialists going out there.
Mr. Perez, this is a phased-in pilot program. All of the recommendations were not being brought forward. So a number of those, it's going to be phased in and we're going to review this next year to measure the success of it. So we did have a very thoughtful task force that reviewed it in all aspects, but this is a phased-in. We're only going to be taking action and allocating on some of the recommendations, not the entire comprehensive recommendations from the task force. So just do keep in mind that it is...
Right. Well, like I said, we had, well, a very good program, you know. I know this is, you say it's pilot, but we had a very successful program that was working out there. And so the fact that...
No, we didn't.
Well, I agree with you. Well, talk to the sheriff about that.
No, we didn't.
And they would echo and some of, you know, are on the same task force that did provide recommendations. It was minimal at best. It did not have the level of resources allocated and that's why we are here tonight. If it was successful, there would not have been any modifications.
I agree with you about minimum. That's exactly what I'm saying. They, there was enough, there wasn't enough support staff dealing with the total issues that these police officers and the assistant that went out there. I agree with you. This is the same thing. This is minimum also and needs more staff. It generates money. It's a money-making job. ADA improves 100%.
Well, I appreciate your enthusiasm for the entire comprehensive recommendation, but since we will hopefully be thoughtful and prudent with our financial resources, I do appreciate the superintendent bringing this phased-in approach. Who else has comments? Yes, Mr. Madison.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Gosh, thank you for the report. It was a well-thought-out report. I want to thank the task force as well, that put a lot of hours in and I know spending on different task forces throughout my journey on here. So it's a lot of time that we put into it. I just, just a couple of comments. I think SARB is getting a lot more attention now and I see it's going to improve in a great deal. We've had it, but we certainly could have done a lot better, so we're trying to highlight it right now. You know, it was very evident to me when I went through the entire report and the data, this district is so good with data. We bring a lot of information on. And we've got our work cut out. When I look at the subgroups and I look at it in detail, the African-American, Hispanics, the English learners and the American Indians, we have some major issues there. K through three or four, and we wonder why these kids don't read when they're not in school. And our proficiency level, if we're going to move it up another notch, these are the really three components in there in our subgroups that we really have to tackle. Then it goes into the high school where we have another issue where kids aren't coming to school. So it's kind of a two-pronged look at. I'm glad we can see it very, very clearly right now. I guess my only point is, is a game plan. I'd like to see a comprehensive game plan or initial game plan and how we're going to execute towards some of these major problems that we have with these subgroups here. I think Mr. Perez did bring up some points and it's not going to be easy. Those are challenging marks. When we, you go through this book and you look at every school, which I did, and a lot of them are in my area, it's going to be a major challenge. It's one thing billing capacity, resources, and even though we'll get it back through it, but are we going to move the notch on our educational level with graduation rates, kids can read, those types of things that really play dear to my heart, that I look forward to. So we don't just build silos, and I'm not saying we're going to build silos, but we want to make sure we're going to really educate children. So with that, good job.
Thank you. And I do want to reinforce with the board that in addition to the report and the analysis of the current condition, that's part of the process, is to do a thorough analysis. And we do a good job with data and the data is very important to look at and analyze, but then the next thing is, once you look at it and begin to develop a course of action, accompanying that general course of action and that staffing recommendation is our annual implementation plans and then it's to execute those plans. And that information will be forthcoming as soon as there's the approval. I know, for example, Mr. Gordon, under the supervision and leadership with, in Carl's office, will be, that's the roadmap and will be adhering to that on an annual basis and progress will be shared with the board. It'll be coming to cabinet to review. Sometimes plans need to be modified, but we don't just stop with the documents you have. Now it's time to say, okay, now it's execute time. And that has to come with a thorough plan, detailed analysis of that and clear timelines to move forward.
And I think measures, one thing, ADA that we will capture and prove it into the millions, hopefully as large as this district is. But we also, I keep stressing the educational piece, are we improving in that area? And that's what's most important as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Oliviani?
I just had a question and then two quick comments. This is excellent. I love being able to look directly at it and see numbers. Thank you very much. We keep saying we're starting in four areas and I cannot find which four they are. Where are we starting?
Well, once you approve, we'll identify them, but they'll probably be the four areas that are of greatest need.
So it will be the four highest, I could just assume?
Yeah, we will do this in dialogue with elementary and secondary education.
Okay, okay. I think that this allows our staff who works very hard to work smarter. I think we're going to give them the tools to succeed. I think, just as with the police services, it was done through a process that took the time and drew on everyone's experience and expertise and that's very important. I think we will be able to spend this money and it will pay itself back tenfold because it will help the whole student, not just the money from their attendance, but I think we can empower them to be successful, independent learners. And that's the difference. If we can catch them in our P, T, it's not TK, what's the right word? Donna, what's the right word? No, PK, like, pre-K, okay. Pre-K to three. We've got some horrible, scary numbers in those departments and if we can teach those kids to come to school from the beginning, you've just made everything else better, their whole lives. So I think it's just incredible work. Thank you. Thank you for what you did, Carmen. I know it was a lot of time.
Yes, Mr. Fortina.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment. I have a problem with allowing accusations to be put on the table and left there without them being spoken to because they have some credibility when you don't challenge them. Every single person, I stated before that this was an inclusive process. Every single individual who is involved in SARB, Sheriff's Department, the program specialists, the school nurse, every single person, principals, everybody involved was on the team. They were on the committee. Every single person who has been involved with SARB was a part of the team that looked at what were we doing, how were we doing it, why were we doing it, where can it be fixed? The decision-making model was in place from the first day and it was there with the people who have been involved with SARB since its beginning in this district. So people, people who had the day-to-day knowledge, they were there. If you had concerns, I wish you would have picked up the phone because we could have resolved a lot of those concerns. Everybody who should have been there was there and that's what made that committee so strong. And that's why the recommendations can be supported. There's differences certainly amongst us. Let's implement the whole thing, let's go on a pilot approach. But the thing is, the program that was presented is intact and Don has a monthly schedule of things that are going to be implemented, beginning with the approval of this. So the thought, again, the clarity of thought and the use of decision-making model and the involvement of all of the stakeholders and in particular, the people who had been directly involved with SARB is what contributed to the development of the recommendation. So I just need to say that. Thank you.
One more issue. The other issue I have is this, before it was concentrated, I know for the Florin High School, though that particular project was concentrated on Florin High School, Rutter and Feeder Elementarys. What I'm concerned about this is this is going to be district-wide now, this program, versus what, like it was before?
No, we'll be implementing a pilot in...
What?
It's a pilot that will be addressing four regions.
For the what? For the nine high schools or what, nine regions?
Four of the nine.
Four, and which ones are those?
Carl? We haven't identified them yet because we were working with elementary and secondary education to do so, but we will be recommending the four regions that have highest need.
The highest need? So, but prior to the other program, they were concentrated in Valley and Florin, correct?
The SARB program, the previous SARB program was to address the full district.
Full?
Yes.
Well, I heard different. All right, thank you.
Again, Mr. Perez, these are excellent opportunities to meet with staff and our superintendent so that we can address any misconceptions or gossip or myths that are out there and get the facts. First and foremost, I want to thank you for this and I want to thank my colleague. As I stated earlier, I think this is tremendous work being done on behalf of our district. You know, chronic absenteeism is, it is a very complex issue and you can't just, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So I appreciate that our district is taking a very thoughtful and methodical approach and really looking at this from all aspects because I do think that we will go a long way in addressing things like the achievement gap. And it's not just about ADA, but it is about increasing graduation rates and helping our kids. kids. And it does take a multi-tiered approach in looking at this. And I'm very thankful that we did have a very solid task force, so I also want to go on the record of thanking the task force for their time and commitment, for coming up with a proposal that I think will go a long way towards identifying the needs of our students. I mean, the bottom line is very simple. Kids do not learn if they're not in school. And so, whatever we can do to help facilitate that, again, it's going to take a lot of different creative ways to look at this, and I appreciate that we are focusing on this and allocating more resources, long overdue. I'm thankful that we are in a budget, in a climate that we can spend and invest in our children. So, I want to thank you again for your wonderful report. And with that, I will call for a motion, and I see somebody jumping right here already, for a motion to approve the recommendations and budget for the SARB pilot program for a 2015-16 school year. Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
I second it.
We have a motion from Mr. Fortina, and a second from Mr. Perez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have the Melrose Tax Foreclosure Resolution. I'd like to call on Mr. Rich Fagan.
Good evening again. This evening, I'm here to kind of follow with, Mr. Pierce earlier talked about the Melrose rates and how those are done. I'm here to talk about what happens when they don't get paid. So, every year, as part of the guidelines that govern the foreclosure of our special tax liens, the Melrose taxes, we have two requirements, that any single landholder that has a total value of taxes due of greater than $25,000, we're required to strip those off and collect those, and proceed to get those collected on behalf of the district, as opposed to having the county, who normally collects all of the property taxes. Or if our total delinquency is greater than 10 percent. I'm happy to say that this year, our total delinquency is 1.78 percent, so we're well within those guidelines. However, we do have a particular tax property holder that does have greater than $25,000 this year, and in fact, it's about $27,000. So, I'm here to ask the board to approve resolution number one for the 2015 school year, that would allow us to judicially foreclose on the properties and collect them on our behalf. I'm also asking that, because we're working off preliminary tax reports, that should they be claimed, that we might not follow through and claim them, should the lienhold or the property owner come through and pay them. We will get the final report on August 7th, that will say, yes, he has officially defaulted on these for the 2014-15 fiscal year. And so, it's, the resolution is to collect them unless he pays them between now and August 7th. So, ask the board to ask any questions and approve the resolution.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing and seeing none, I would like to call for a motion to approve Melrose Tax Foreclosure Resolution Number One, 2015-2016.
I move approval of resolution number one.
We have a motion from Mr. Fortina.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Madison. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstentions? Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Ms. Sandra Lowry, for After School Education and Safety, AESS, 21st Century Community Learning Center Contracts for After School Programs at Roy Herberger Elementary, Franklin Elementary, Mary Sukamoto Elementary, James McKee Elementary, and Sierra Enterprise Elementary.
Thank you once again. Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Avalos. I am back up before you again this evening, requesting as staff that the master contract with Target Excellence be approved. This contract provides a comprehensive after-school program at those five elementary schools that Ms. Singh Allen just spoke about. The after-school services will be paid for through the After School Education and Safety, that's our ACES grant, and the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. We are requesting that the Board of Education approve this contract between the Elk Grove Unified School District and Target Excellence in the amount listed there, to serve those schools during the 2015-2016 school year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lowry. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none. Okay. Mr. Perez.
Just one typo. On page 34, you need to change July to August 2015 on the bottom, second to the last paragraph. That's all.
Mr. Perez, out of courtesy, it would be great if you could inform staff beforehand.
Oh, I just noticed it when I was reviewing it on the way over here.
Reading while driving. Excellent.
Hour before I left home.
Okay.
Madam Chair, as a former user of this program, I will gladly move it.
Thank you. We have a motion, Ms. Chiaris Espinoza. Do we have a second?
A seconded.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we are on to board member and superintendent reports. Does anyone have a report? All right, Mr. Superintendent, do you have a report?
I'll just do a very quick, I just wanted to do an official welcome to Ms. Avalos to the dais. We are most happy to have you, and she'll give me the dirty looks for doing this, but I'm doing it anyway. And also, thanking Ms. Hind for all the work as we're doing the transition in the superintendent's office. Ms. Hind has been instrumental in supporting us with the new superintendent and the other new folks in my office. It's been great, so it's been going well, so that's it.
What about our new human resource? Can we, everybody knows the new...
Mr. Riley?
Come in, stand in.
Stand up there, so we can...
There we go.
Thank you.
This is Mr. David Riley, new HR, Associate Superintendent, and we are most happy to have him join us. Come as well.
All right, welcome, everyone. All right, Consent Agenda, Mr. Fortina.
I move approval of items number one through 22, except for item number 13, which has been deleted.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Fortina. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Oliviani, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Excellent. All right, other items from the floor, Mr. Fortina.
Just one quick one. We've had a lot of special moments tonight, none of least which, we are online. Hooray for Elk Grove Unified School District, and the program is working, and having the program available is helpful, and don't have to carry a binder around, and it's terrific, wonderful. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. All right, with all of that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.